All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January the ninth meeting of the Camden Planning Board. Before we start, as usual, can I ask if there are any public comments on non-agenda items? Being non, we'll continue, and the first thing on the agenda is a request to abandon an approved subdivision. And we have...
Yeah, and maybe I'll just maybe introduce this. I sent a memo out last night. Hopefully, you guys read it. It just explains it a little bit. What Camden Properties LLC and CL Camden are requesting is an abandonment of Steamboat Landing subdivision. That was first approved back in 2009. And then 2012, there was a revision done to that subdivision. This was when Wayfair was looking to do some residential at the time over in that area. None of the properties have been conveyed. There's been no improvements done as part of that subdivision. What Lyman Morris or Camden Properties is looking to do is just abandon that subdivision altogether. And that is it. And we have done abandonment, subdivision abandonments in the past, and there's just this one little sheet that we get you to sign, and then that gets recorded, and then that subdivision goes away. And then maybe you can let Josh and Drew explain what this is about beyond, if you can, beyond what I just said. I'm not sure. There's much more than that.
Thanks for seeing us, guys. I'm gonna let Josh talk, because he knows better the stuff than I do. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for hearing us tonight. As Jeremy said, we essentially want to, I guess, turn on the time machine and bring return the property to the single lot that it was before. Then Wayfair Marine, they had plans for this that required this new subdivision to be implemented, and it's no longer applicable to the marine storage and service business that we operate. So we're simply asking to return it to one lot. The easements that serve the property and serve the neighboring properties all remain. So it's...
That is one thing I wanted to mention I failed to mention. There are deed restrictions and covenants and declarations on the property. Those all remain in force. There is a public easement down at the end for a turnaround area, or I think that's what we call it on that, out near Steamboat Landing. That remains in place. None of that changes. This is just getting rid of the lot line, interior lot lines, and merges it, well, gets it back to one lot.
What's on it for you?
So we got recommended by Gartley and Dorsky when we first bought this property to eliminate these, and the reason is the tax base. So apparently, we pay more in taxes here by dividing them, which I didn't know. So we've gone three and a half, four years now. We're like, all right, let's get this going. And that actually opens up, we can rework that if we have to rework any of those buildings and stuff like that. We're not crossing into lines or stuff like that, so...
Yeah, that made all those buildings non-conforming. And they did this subdivision...
I had wondered that, too, is how much...
Yeah, so now they'll be back to conforming.
Oh, interesting. So that's kind of it. It's pretty basic.
Yeah.
I will say, you are not allowed to deny someone's request to abandon a subdivision because of the tax implications, just so you know.
Okay.
You're expecting someone?
That's fifty cents a week off your paycheck, Jeremy.
I'm a taxidermist for an abatement.
That's it? So, I mean, I guess leave it to you guys to discuss, and then someone make a motion, and then that...
Okay.
Take a vote.
So any comments or questions, gentlemen?
I like it. Anytime, somebody.
All right, smile face, thumbs up from Jeff. Okay.
No, it's great. You know, I totally support Lyman Morris for what they're contributing to the community, and this just makes so much sense. I definitely see this as like a part of a working waterfront as opposed to a residential development.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I don't have anything to add?
No.
I feel it makes sense.
Yeah? Great. So can we pass this along now?
Do we need to do a motion?
Someone needs to make a motion to abandon the subdivision. Someone second it, and then take a vote. And then there's the one-page form abandonment that will get recorded in the registry of deeds. And we'll just get that notarized, and that's about it. So if someone can make a motion, second and a vote.
I move that we accept the applicant's request for abandonment of the subdivision as shown on the...
Steamboat Landing?
Yeah, the Steamboat Landing.
And if you can make sure to include with the conditions that the declarations and covenants and all that stuff, restrictions stay in the property.
And covenants and all those easements are still in effect.
Continue.
Continuing.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's five-zero unanimous.
Yeah, bring in another one, more of these subdivisions.
Those look pretty quick.
All right. All right, can we get this signed off on now, then?
Now, take those two originals and sign, sign and date, and then around the board and sign on the same line.
Same order, please.
It'll work.
It's a lawyer's pen. It's more complicated than it needs to be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hope we didn't take too much of your time.
We're a very long-winded planning board. All right, stop doing that for a second.
We'll have more for you, I'm sure.
Sign off, same order. So sign and then pass along to Richard. Yeah. Right?
Yes.
All right.
We don't have to wait for that continuing.
That goes your way.
Go ahead, as long as they don't get confused. Fantastic.
All right.
So next thing on the agenda is a public hearing about the proposed zoning ordinance So I think Jeremy starts by...
Yep, I'll introduce this. And again, this is a public hearing. We're gonna do them first, do one on accessory apartments, and then we'll do the second one will be on site plan administration amendments. Remember, these go, public hearing before you folks, and then it will go to the select board. They'll have a public hearing as well, and then they'll make a vote to include it on the warrant articles for June. I suspect it'll go to the select board with, probably the first meeting in February would be my guess. And that, I guess I could go into detail on the accessory apartment. We have talked about this for a handful of meetings. From my perspective, you know, there's a lot of committees in town that are talking about housing affordability, housing options. Same time, we also have people talking about short-term rentals. These are not the same. They're not, we're not talking short-term rentals in this case. We're talking accessory apartments. And I'm certain short-term rentals will come up in the coming year. But as this, what this ordinance amendment will do, will add accessory apartments as a permitted use in the RU1, RU2, and CR districts. And we'll have to amend the development tables for those districts as well. And again, as well as the definition of accessory apartments. And again, this is a tool to bring affordable housing to a community, smaller and subordinate to the principal dwelling. Accessory apartments can provide many positive elements to the housing stock and to the community at large. And that's all I have to say. I think you could probably open the public hearing, take comments from the public.
Yes, I do have, yes. So at this point, I would open the hearing up to any member of the public who might wish to speak. If you'd wish to speak, sir, I'd ask if you'd come up and...
I guess that might be me.
That would be you, I think. You probably just need to press the button to turn it green on the microphone, and if you could just state your name as well, and do we need...
My name is Stephen Golds. I live on Grove Street, and I've come to speak to this issue as a member of the community. I do not own an accessory apartment. My concern is for some of the unintended consequences of this agenda. I feel that, first of all, it's a very good thing, real progress, to permit the owners to move into the smaller apartment, you know, as they age, or their finance changes, or whatever. However, I feel that there are some unintended results of this in, that revolve around the insistence that anyone that's living in either unit be a full-time resident. And I can think of three scenarios, and I only had time to write down two of them, okay? But one of them is, and I don't know how many accessory apartments there are in town, but some of them now or in the future might be on property or parts of houses that are owned by summer residences. Now, residents, excuse me. If the summer resident chooses to rent the accessory apartment under this law legally to a full-time resident for a number of reasons, one might be economic, one might be, well, there's someone that'll look over their property, look after their property while they're not there. I believe the way this is worded, it says that they can't use the property. They can't use the other half of the property, because whoever uses the other half of the property has to be a full-time resident, and they would not qualify under those conditions. Another scenario is, so you have an elderly couple living in a house and with an accessory apartment, and they rent the accessory apartment. The elderly couple dies or becomes infirmed, moves to Quarry Hill. The house is inherited by the children, who probably grew up in Maine, would like to come back to Maine someday, but due to career or children or whatever, they can't do that now. They can't rent the other half of the house, because that's supposed to be owner-occupied. An owner-occupied and a full-time residence. So that puts them at a handicap. There was a third scenario. Well, that's about it. You know, if they inherit, and they would like to come back, we're keeping them from coming back, because it may be an economic hardship to them to only be able to rent the accessory apartment or the other half. You know, while they're waiting to be able to come back to town, they might need the revenue of both parts of the house. And I don't see any negative aspects to the community of having a property that has an accessory apartment in a house to have two different, unrelated, non-owner, full-time residents. It's the same thing as a two-family house. I don't, I don't see how that hurts the community. The community gives a great deal, I shouldn't call this, a great deal of discussion, I won't call it lip service, about attracting young people, attracting new people, having housing for workers who work in town, keeping our children here by having different housing alternatives for them, okay? And I think the way this is worded, and again, I applaud the idea that the owners can move into the smaller one, but all the fine print of this defeats those concepts.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The great questions.
Thank you.
That's the reason we're having a public hearing, is to get feedback this kind of...
The inheritance aspect had come up in our discussions. We had been talking about that, actually, on the board. It's something that we considered as well. Hadn't really considered the other question of the exclusion of one party for the other. So that's, that's worth looking into as well.
It is. I agree, and I appreciate the comments. One thought I had, we did schedule this hearing to continue to the next meeting, just so we all know that.
I'm surprised we've not had more people arrive, actually. I mean, I let a couple of people know who were interested, so I'm honestly, quite frankly, I'm surprised.
Yeah.
Because it would be good to get...
Well, to be honest...
More feedback from the community.
When I went to Town Hall, I sort of thought the whole, the only change here was gonna be about the couple being able to move into the smaller unit. But when I read it, I see there's a lot more issues at stake here.
And so it may be possible just to delete owners out of... What's that?
In number two?
In number two?
That's what I'm looking at, too.
And just, I mean, one thought is just to require it to be, both of them be primary residents.
Yep.
Of the people residing there, so we could almost take out owners.
Just property owner.
So we're not, you know, I didn't come here to deal with the short-term rental business.
Right. That's a separate, that's a separate conversation.
We're treading around that, too, yeah.
That will come to pass, I imagine, but...
But at the same...
I think that would solve it.
I think so, too. I'd quickly look through this, I think, taking out owners.
Solve this problem, I think.
Number two, if we just...
Residents?
Right.
It's a primary residence.
Primary residence of whoever occupies either one.
Yeah, because it's a rental property. That's what we're going for.
It's number five as well, you know, using the language of resident as opposed to owner, so...
Right, so we could really just, just remove property owners, primary residents.
You might have number four, you have a, do you have a similar issue just as far as language?
Yeah, well, I'll look at owner, and I will do that very quickly in the next couple of days, so that we can... You think we can...
Yeah, no, the only question I'd kind of have is, is at the moment, two-family dwellings aren't allowed in every area of town.
Correct.
Right? And your comment about effective, you know, this does, if you start changing number four, where you've got one of three units, and there's not a requirement for property owner to be one of that primary residence, does that then, in effect, allow us to have two-family residences anywhere in town?
No, that's zoning, lot standards. A lot of this is existing two-family dwellings that have an accessory apartment, and we're just trying to make it so that the owners can occupy the accessory apartment and rent it.
I mean, it seems to me that owner-occupied language should disappear from all of this.
I think that's...
I think that's...
It's that simple.
I think it's that simple.
Yeah. Yeah, I like it.
You help make it shorter.
Yeah.
There you go, mission accomplished.
Anytime, you're always welcome.
Always is welcome at these meetings.
We got a chair over there.
Does anybody else have any issues, gentlemen?
No, that was awesome.
I do.
Yeah, so just...
Just a couple little housekeeping issues, I think. In the first paragraph...
Yep.
Under the definition of accessory apartment.
Yep.
On the third line, all right, an accessory building on the same lot. If we just put a period there and eliminated that whole, like, wordy next two sentences.
We do tend to break out what we mean by accessory apartments, though, partly because we're defining that there is bathing and cooking going on there, right?
Isn't that just like...
Let me just look at the definition, how we define dwelling unit.
The dwelling would consist of?
Good question. If we've got a definition of that already, then...
Yeah, and we already have accessory use defined.
Does that, maybe we're just...
Yeah, the dwelling...
Yeah, but I mean, accessory apartment, we already have accessory use defined, and...
So we do define dwelling unit that says, room or group of rooms designed and equipped exclusively for use as permanent, seasonal, or temporary living quarters for one or more persons of a family at a time, and containing living, sleeping, toilet, and cooking facilities.
Okay.
Our definition of accessory apartments doesn't include the toilet facilities. It's very odd.
You're pretty rough.
I think it'd be tough to rent one without...
I think what we should, I hear what you're saying. I think since we define all of that in the dwelling unit definition, that we could take that out of that definition completely, because we already define what's included in a dwelling unit in the definition of dwelling unit. So that makes sense to me. So we're gonna delete out of here, as may be allowed, period in the third line, right? On the same lot as a...
Single family.
I think you keep, Mark, I think you keep as a single family or two-family dwelling as may be allowed, period into the fourth sentence or fourth line, and then delete...
You're saying, before that, you're saying within a single family or two-family dwelling.
Okay, there you go. Yep. So we're gonna end it on the same lot, period.
That's what he'd like to do, yeah.
And then delete all that down to, and then end the deletion at cooking.
Correct.
That makes sense. Thank you. Boy, that's getting shorter.
Good job, Mark.
Next thing.
What else?
Under minimum lot area.
Yes.
The tables.
Yes.
Says minimum lot, the heading is minimum lot area per dwelling unit. So now, when you have a dwelling unit, if you have a two-family dwelling unit, is that sixty thousand per dwelling unit, as the heading says, or just sixty thousand?
It's a single family.
In RU1, in RU2...
My recommendation would be in the heading, just to eliminate per dwelling unit, state it minimum lot area.
Well, that's common to every single district.
It's common to every district that we have, so...
Per lot?
Per dwelling unit.
Per dwelling unit. I'd hate to start veering from all of that, Mark, and I'd like to keep the dwelling, per dwelling unit.
So when you have two-family dwellings...
RU1, if you wanted a two-family dwelling, you would need one hundred and twenty thousand square feet for two families.
Oh, so that's, that's the way it's supposed to read?
Yes.
But they're not permitted, two-family dwellings.
In RU1. Right, not, not in RU1, not in RU1, sorry.
Right, and on the backs, back of that, the RU2.
Yep.
Two-family dwellings. So you...
Which you can have in RU2.
But that would be one hundred and twenty thousand square feet.
Correct. Per dwelling unit. You need one hundred and twenty thousand for two units. The accessory unit does not require any additional area unless shoreline zoning or state subsurface wastewater rules require.
Perfect, then it says just what I...
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Steve, really appreciate that. It makes, makes great sense. Yep.
And you're welcome anytime.
We'll smile next time you walk through the door.
Actually, we have a seat available.
Yeah, you're still the planning board.
Come back, we...
Give him over one more.
Well, what I was gonna say is, I have some comments to make, but Ethan took my copy and marked it up as his.
This one is...
Do you have any more comments about this while we're discussing it?
Well, there was something I need to read...
Can we agree...
She does still have some comments if...
Okay, and I'm just trying to, we need to, like, finalize the language so that we can get this, we're gonna have to re-advertise this, because these changes are substantial, the one that Steve indicated, which is fine. The one, the dwelling unit, is not substantial, since we already defined dwelling unit.
Right.
So that's not substantial, but, so we'll just have to redo that. That's fine. Richard, what do you got?
Well, I wasn't able to follow this, because...
Ethan.
Ethan had taken my only copy that I came to pick up yesterday.
Email them to all of you.
I need to read it. There was just some slight definition of a...
I don't need it anymore.
Owner. Let me look into it and get back to you. It was just a minor issue.
We can change it after.
Well, I'll get back to you in a minute. You know, let me just read it.
Spend some time reading it quickly.
We can go on the next item now if you want to.
It's time to order food.
We're kind of stuck on this, on this one right now. I...
Do we want to just take a break for a couple of minutes, so Richard can read it? Because we do need to get this tied up, because if there are further changes, they need to get done in public now, so that Jeremy can change them and they can get read. So let's just, can we do that?
Yes, you can.
Take a minute to read through it.
Take a slow read.
That's fine, that's your time.
I think we're good.
You're a lawyer, aren't you?
All right.
Okay, we're on, we...
Yeah, I cleared it out.
All set. So for the language, let's just finalize this.
Yeah.
And then we need to close the public, we should probably close the public hearing and then discuss. And then, Rosie, do you want to take a motion to close the public hearing?
Do we need to finalize the language first?
I don't want to close the whole public hearing.
Not, correct. Yeah.
Are you all done with finalizing the language, then?
We'll go with that. We're gonna delete, in the accessory apartment definition, we're gonna stop at, on the same lot, period, delete the whole single family down to cooking, and then in the rest of the language, in one through five below, we are going to delete, shall serve as, so this is now down at number two, single-family dwelling or the accessory apartment shall serve as the tenant or occupants' primary residence. How's that?
Occupants, plural.
Sure.
I'm better with occupants.
Yeah, occupant.
Occupant.
Occupants, S apostrophe, correct?
Yes.
The owner.
Get that apostrophe in the right place, thank you. It's important.
Primary residence, so that's number two is changing. You got that?
Yep.
And then we're going to then, let's just read how three says, the remaining dwelling unit not occupied by, we could then say, the remaining dwelling unit shall serve as the primary residence of the person or persons residing there. Correct?
Terrific.
Yeah. The remaining dwelling unit shall serve as the primary residence of the person or persons residing there.
Or the...
Or the occupants. We'll just keep it as is below.
Why don't you say the single-family dwelling shall serve as the occupant singular primary residence, the accessory apartment shall serve as the primary resident?
So we could get rid of three altogether, is what you're saying?
Well, no, keep two, but make it just one. The single-family dwelling shall serve as the occupants' primary residence. The accessory apartment shall serve as the primary resident.
It's an or between the two, though, right?
No.
Both of them.
They're both of them.
Both of them are primary residents.
Right, so it's just...
So number two currently says, the single-family dwelling or the accessory apartment shall serve as the property owner's primary residence.
Right.
Because the property owner can live in either of them.
Or between them. You can short-term rent a one of them.
You can't short-term, Jeff, stop talking short-term rentals, please.
And we're taking out property owners, because it can just be served as a primary...
Right, so, and then if you look at...
We don't need to have a property owner.
You can just eliminate three.
And, and maybe even four. We could almost combine two, three, and four into one sentence that says, the units in either the single-family home or the two-unit and the accessory shall be occupied as primary residence of the tenants.
Not tenants.
Not tenant.
Occupants, sorry.
Because basically, what we're saying is all...
All of the units.
All units are going to be primary residents of, period.
Correct.
Period. That's it, right?
That's what we're saying?
Yeah.
I mean, that is, and you can still, I mean, this doesn't stop you being able to do short-term rentals for part of the year on one of the units, should you choose to, because it would still be a primary residence and, right? I mean, that's, although we're not dealing with that, this doesn't become so draconian it cuts out what's already allowed now.
Yep.
Just saying that you can't own one of these buildings with an accessory apartment and rent both of them out and do short-term rentals in both of them. You've got to have...
All right, I think I have some time to finalize this language, understanding where everyone, I think everyone understands where we are with this, correct?
Yeah, I think we identified the problem with...
With Steve brought up.
He's helped, you know, the owner aspect and absentee owners and things like...
I think what we care about is that the units are occupied as primary residences.
Correct. I think that's accurate. So where the owner language comes in, I don't think there's any real benefit to that.
Okay.
But, so...
You thinking?
Well, number two, currently, the way it's written, if you have a single-family dwelling and it has an accessory apartment, you own the house and you live in one of them, it doesn't matter, however you rent that out, the other one, it doesn't matter, the way However you rent that out, the other one, it doesn't matter, the way this is written, as long as you.
You don't want to get on the house.
The property owner's primary residence.
No.
Taking property.
We're taking that out.
So then we take that out, and you make it so that the single-family dwelling and the accessory apartment need to be the primary residence. It changes number two. Because number two is written that if you, if you own a single-family house with an accessory apartment, one of the units needs to be a primary residence, the other.
Well, actually, if you kept going.
The way it was written, but both have to be.
So you take owner out.
Both still need to be a primary residence of the occupant.
Correct.
That's not the way we intended number two.
That is the way we.
It is, because if you kept going, Jeff, I think what we were trying to do was, we were saying that the owner, because the way the ordinance read before, said the owner had to live in the primary use structure.
Yeah.
And so what we were doing was saying that the owner then could live in the accessory apartment and then rent the other one, and that's how it was below. So I think what we wanna do is, we're, we're just clarifying that an owner does not need to reside on the property, but whoever is living in those units that have an accessory apartment on them need to, need to be living there as their primary residence. That's it.
So if you're a property owner, you could rent out the main res, your house and your accessory apartment.
And you're just limiting what somebody can do with a property that has an accessory apartment. If.
We already did before.
It is now.
It is now.
Uh huh.
So.
Right now, the ordinance says that the, that the owner of the property, if you're gonna have an accessory apartment, the owner has to, can only live in the primary residence.
Primary residence, but they can rent out the accessory apartment.
And that has to be rented out as someone's primary residence as well.
So.
Currently.
Why, why are we keeping it that way? That it has to be primary residence all the time?
Because that's a different discussion.
That is the different discussion.
So the way we wrote it, number two, and we agreed on it, that's not the way that's written.
No, I think if you gotta take one, two, three, four, and five all together, because what we were trying to say was that, that, that that owner, again, could live not only like they had to currently, in the current way the ordinance says, he had to live in the primary use building, this would enable the owner to live in the other unit. Now we're just saying, all of the units can be occupied by people as their primary residence, the owner doesn't need to live there.
But they all need to be primary.
Right.
That's your struggle?
Yeah, because I agreed on number two, thinking that, you know, as long as the owner's there on site, they can rent the other one however they want. And I would rather the homeowner have a little more freedom in that option versus only having, only being able to rent to primary residence.
Well, this is, this is a whole new conversation on this accessory apartment deal.
No, because we just changed number two dramatically. If we only take out owners' primary or property owners, then as suggested, then I'm cool with that.
But the number three goes on to say.
Remaining dwelling unit shall serve as the primary residence.
There you go, so you kinda covered it right there.
It's still there, so they're both units are primary residences.
So can you, I mean, I, I do think these are all really legitimate questions, and, and when we're talking about something that possibly changes what you can and can't do, can you have an accessory apartment unit, live in your house, and then rent your accessory apartment unit out one week at a time at Airbnb under this? Can you do that, can you do that now?
No, you cannot.
That's not allowed in town.
No, because.
You can rent your own house out if you move out of it one week at a time, that's allowed. You could be, this could be, what we're saying is, you could have a house that's a primary residence, as long as you're living there for six months and one week of the year, that's your primary residence. And for the other five months, under this ordinance, you can still rent your house out to someone else on a short-term basis, one week at a time, because it would still technically be your.
Sure. I'm, I'm, I hear where you're going.
I mean, I'm, I'm just interested in what.
Because we're talking about primary residence, and primary residence is that six month plus one day.
That's.
So if, if I live there.
Is if, if it were your primary residence, and say you wanted to just rent your house out for two weeks in the summer.
Yeah.
Just to cover taxes or boat expenses or whatever.
You can do that.
You could do that also.
You could still do that.
You cannot turn it into a full-time commercial weekly rental.
Yes. Yes.
That's what we're doing.
Are there examples of this not being used properly in town now?
I mean.
And what sort of, what sort of thing would you tell me about? Not names, but what, what are examples that are not within the.
Honestly, I can't give you any specific examples of someone that is, that is using an accessory apartment.
As their residence?
Illegally, I, I just don't, I don't have enough information or data, I mean, I can't even tell you how many accessory apartments we have in town permitted as accessory apartments. I just can't do that.
People buy, property changes hands, the people know there's an apartment over the garage, they don't know accessory apartment from anything else. They know an apartment and they rent it out.
What would you say the goal of this is?
The goal of that, of this is to.
Beyond clarification, like what, what are we trying?
Facilitate some additional dwelling units, small dwelling units in town to provide people the opportunity to, you know, like Mark said.
It's basically a more liberal way of looking at things, even though when you read it, it seems like it's a more constrictive.
Well, I mean, again.
I think where this started out is where you wanted, somebody who was living in a larger home, wanted to downsize to be able to move into.
To keep the house.
The accessory apartment and be able to rent the house and still keep their own.
Right, I think that was too large driving.
That was my understanding.
But the accessory apartment can't be rented by the week, even if nobody's there.
Correct.
That can only be rented long-term, according to the way it's defined now.
So in theory, both of those, both of the units could then be rented, if primary residents were occupying both of those units for six months and a day, then in theory, they could rent the other building, the both units weekly. After that, because they're primary residents, X is X number of days. Which is, I mean, you can play that game if people want, and that allows, gives people opportunity. It'd be hard to regulate it.
I mean, our goal is, one, one is to make sure that people who've lived here for a long time, who are then retiring, can stay in their homes when they're downsizing and stay, keep their land. And the other goal, my understanding was, was for people in town who need affordable places to rent. Who work around here, and we want to increase the supply of affordable rentals for people, right?
It increases density too, on in-town lots, which, which I, I think we ought to encourage, is in, increased density in town.
How does this work on, on another track, instead of like addressing people downsizing and saving money and all that? What if you have a large summer residence where people live for two, the owners live for a couple of months of the summer, which makes them not principal residents, because they're not here.
Right, but they own it.
They, they own it.
They own it, they live here for two months.
Okay, and when they go back to their regular or their full-time residence, they rent out that house and they rent out the garage apartment next to it.
Mm-hmm. That's. That's legit.
The thing is, if, if it's a sizable lot.
Chances are it would be.
Garage apartment would not be considered accessory apartment.
Exactly.
It would be a two-family.
Well, then what if it wasn't a sizable lot?
Well.
In other words, I'm looking at the other approach, like, this is, this is a gesture to increase density, to make the town more affordable, but there's another element in this town too, that we need to look at.
And that is. I think you'd be allowed to do that though, I mean, if you're a summer resident and you've got a kind of caretaker's cottage on the premises.
I think that's what Steve was saying.
You can rent that out. But the way we're talking about rejigging this is, you could totally be here for two weeks in the summer and rent out your caretaker's residence year-round, so long as it's a kind of year-round residence.
And you can rent it out the main house.
And you could rent out the main house for the rest of the year too, if you wanted to.
If you have enough lot area.
Okay.
And chances are you would, you know.
The difference in what you're talking about now, and the way it is now, is that that, an accessory apartment is going to become a full-blown dwelling unit with all the rights of rental as a, as a dwelling unit. Because it can be rented by the week, instead of by a long-term tenant. That, and whether that's important or not, but that's the difference.
I mean, I also think it's possible, I know we're talking dwelling units, and if you got enough lot size, then it becomes a two, I don't think it becomes a two-unit, because I just have a hundred, say, I'm in RU1, and I have a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, and I'm, have a single-family home, and I wanna put an accessory apartment in there. I can still permit it as an accessory apartment. I don't have to have, you know, I don't have to call it a hundred, a second dwelling unit because I'm at a hundred and twenty thousand square feet.
Why, why would you want to though?
It wouldn't be an accessory apartment.
I mean, it can't, if it's under six hundred square feet, it is.
The whole concept of an accessory apartment is to create a dwelling unit on a smaller scale, on a smaller lot. So if you have the lot size, it would just be two units.
It's a small apartment.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of, yeah, I don't think it's necessarily all that relevant, that question. Honestly, I don't, but I hear what you're saying, I, I think it's, I don't think it impacts this ordinance.
If you're on the sewer thirty thousand.
Well, it would, because if, if there were just two dwelling units, then you could rent them out as vacation rentals.
By the week.
You could rent them all.
Sorry.
There.
If it has an accessory apartment, you can.
There.
Village extension.
If an existing lot has an accessory apartment, and it's next to another one that doesn't, I don't wanna depreciate its value because you can't do as much with it because it has an accessory apartment. That's kinda what I'm looking at. If the house next to it doesn't have an accessory apartment, and it's just as big and just as rentable, you have a better value on that, because you can do, you have unlimited rental potential, you can do, you know, to a family, only summers.
Oh, I see where you're headed.
Okay, so, as do I.
I just don't wanna pinch the properties that have accessory apartments.
Explain that again, so you're more restricted if you have a accessory apartment, according to this?
Because you can only rent to primary residents.
And you're talking about.
So, yeah, so the primary residence isn't there in the summer, I don't know many that.
So you just wanna open it up and just say, not, it doesn't have to be your primary residence?
No, I don't want.
I think it should be a conscious choice, I think he's right about that.
I, I do too.
That's just the way I'm looking at it, is I don't want a neighborhood to be like, kinda freckled with little lots that aren't as valuable because they have these little apartments, so then people go and remove the little apartment, which is not the goal.
I mean, there is, there is, there's a lot of research that says that these accessory apartments do not do anything to property values.
Yeah, but if, if you have something and you go to buy it and it has an accessory apartment, and you're looking to do a short-term rental for the next five years until you're able to move up here, which I've seen a number of times, in this year.
And let's say short-term rental is anything that's rented for more than seven days.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, meaning more than seven days, less than six months, or whatever.
Right.
Primary residence is. And if you go to look at these houses, there's not much real estate available right now, and so there's not much available, and it, one has an accessory apartment versus another one that doesn't, and you really want the one with the accessory apartment, but you wind up realizing that your plan isn't gonna work, so you.
Well, now it can, because the owner doesn't have to occupy the house.
But you don't wanna do.
But you don't wanna be stuck there renting.
Be able to jump in for a couple of weeks here and there.
Or even a couple of months.
Yeah, so that's where you would wanna do.
Or someone doing, you know, the crafts, the craftsman's, you know, shop school, and, you know, how long are those? Those, how long do those sessions run?
So is that what you want the town to happen to the town?
Well.
No, I just wanna be careful that we're not pigeonholing the properties that have accessory apartments and reducing what they can.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, I do, I mean, I think there's a, I think it's a good valid point, I do. Because that two-unit, right now, if I have a two-unit, I can do it, I can do it, right now. And now, if I have a single-family home and I want an accessory unit, I can't do it to either one of them, under this.
This really doesn't change the use of accessory apartments at all, from the current use.
Correct.
So it doesn't change that at all.
No.
Just means you can do it in more areas of town. Right?
But Jeff wants it to change.
Well, no, I.
I think Jeff's just trying to pull up the restriction that this, I mean, single-family homes aren't regulated that way.
Exactly.
A two-family home is not regulated that way.
That's kinda right.
And if you're taking a single-family home plus an accessory apartment, what's the difference between that and a single-family home, or that and a two-unit? But now we're just saying, single-family home in a small unit, you're stuck, you gotta be primary residence, but if you're a two-family, you do whatever.
Keep it over seven days.
I mean, I get that, I, I hear.
And that's all I'm.
I hear, I hear that.
And this ought to be, whatever it is, ought to be equitable to all elements, you know, like including the ones that live here, you know, only part-time, as summer residents.
I, point we're missing here is that two-family unit needs a hundred and twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah, but there's a lot that don't have that too.
Just in RU1 and RU2 and CR.
And in town, it needs fifteen thousand instead of ten.
Right.
So it needs more lot area, you're reducing the minimum lot size is what you're actually doing. Because you're saying you can have a two-family on ten thousand square feet.
But that goes in line with our more density of housing.
Well, I'm just saying, that's.
No, I, I'm not, yeah, I know. That's in our current ordinance, so if you go to the village district, minimum lot size, ten thousand square feet for a single-family or.
Yeah.
And then, this, this accessory apartment does not require additional lot size. That's already in the ordinance.
And the price you pay for having that rental is that it has to be a primary residence. Otherwise, you've, you've gotta start from minimum lot size or whatever.
I don't know what the point I was making. I thought it was that, that because it's an accessory apartment, it's allowing, it's allowing a small apartment on sixty thousand square feet. And we're getting confused with, with a two-unit versus an accessory apartment, where a two-unit is gonna require a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. Accessory apartment requires sixty thousand square feet. So.
In RU, RU2, sixty thousand for a single-family, a hundred and twenty for a two-family. If I wanna add an accessory apartment to that two-family home, it's still a hundred and twenty.
Right.
Yes.
If you can have a two-family, some of these districts don't allow two-families.
RU2's the only one that does, of the CR, of the CR and the RU1 that we're talking about, the changing this. I, I understand where you're coming from on this, Jeff. We hadn't talked about that, you know, we were taking the existing accessory apartment ordinance and trying to expand it a little bit. We weren't, we hadn't gone down this road of.
Yeah.
The inequities of the existing, people with, what they can do with their existing house. What they can do, we have nothing in the ordinance that says your single-family home must be occupied as your primary residence.
Yeah, our economy would probably crumble if we did.
I mean, I.
I'm, so, I guess for me, I'm almost thinking we ought to just try to move this forward, pulling that out. You know, it just says, pulling out the primary residence piece. Nothing else says any other dwelling has to be a primary residence.
It really doesn't, I don't, but I'm, in our multi-families, we don't require it.
Nope.
Was part of the thinking behind putting in these pieces about them being primary residences, because we were, we were, we were trying to prevent investors coming in and buying up.
True.
Property here and doing lots of short-term rentals, and it really destroying our neighborhoods. That was my understanding, that that's really, one of the reasons behind some of this language being here, right? And I think that's.
And I think we carried it forward from the existing language, I certainly wasn't here, that's more, I think, why.
What is the origin of the, of the existing language, I mean, when was that done?
I don't know, it's.
I think it's been there.
The accessory apartment language, like.
I think in the nineties, I'm not sure.
I was gonna say nineties, because in our ordinance, it goes, we go back into the.
And if that's the case.
Early two thousands, where we say we've added things. For that, we weren't adding.
We didn't have that.
There's been differences in interpretation, it used to be, have to be attached, and now it can be separate. So there've been those differences, but it was to provide income on a lot that's otherwise too small. So that.
And I think to provide a little more dense.
Development.
Yeah, which is. Which is, I mean, that's a, that's a, a planning.
Workforce housing.
We need to, we need to ramp up density on the in-town lots.
If it gets used as that.
Right.
This is a question, what we don't want to do is start increasing density and then have it overrun with tourists.
These are valid ideas, but the, the one element that queers it up are the short-term rentals.
That's the other.
We're trying to bury it in all this stuff, it's supposed to just come out.
And they're two separate things, I mean, I hate to bring them together, because they're separate, and I mean, I know the. separate. And I mean, I know the select board and there's groups in town meeting with the lodging alliance next week. I mean, they want to talk short-term rentals still. And I, it's a conversation that's going to come up and keep coming up. I almost feel like we ought to just move this and then deal with that conversation when it comes up. Because, again, if I have a two-family home, I can, nothing says I gotta live there and I can rent it to, I can rent it by the month currently.
So.
And why would we, why would we then say, if you've got, if you've got a single-family home and you want to put accessory, can't rent those by the month? Not, not even one of those units. You gotta, all of them have to be primary. I mean, I, I get it. It's a tough conundrum.
Looking for renters, and you're looking for renters in, oh, it happens to be May or something. You could rent it in the summer, but it has to be somebody's primary residence. So you're kind of.
They're stuck.
To me, there are all kinds of different, kind of, oh, this thing's got to have an accessory apartment.
I almost feel like we should, we ought to move this and, and see what, you know, the select board is going to have a hearing on it and, I mean, change it to not say primary residence. Select board will have another hearing on it with revised language. Select board will have a hearing. Voters will decide. And then, and then we're going to eventually tackle.
Yes.
Short-term rentals in some fashion, I gotta believe.
Have to.
And then we just roll it into that conversation then.
Yeah. And we'll address.
The one other way this has been dealt with in the past is using a date specific. So properties in existence as of this date.
Mm-hmm. I hate that.
That's discriminatory.
I mean, we do that everywhere in the ordinance. I mean, that's like a cater to a certain property.
Grandfather.
We're going to look for affected.
If you've got a property that's already operating, and then to change the wording here to, to make it no longer feasible for them to operate, I think that's wrong.
This doesn't do that.
Yeah, this doesn't do that.
This opens up.
This opens up those a little more.
This is carrying the legacy.
So those people that had accessory units before, permitted under the existing provisions that say the primary owner, the owner needs to live in the primary residence, the other residence needs to be occupied as someone's primary residence, you know, how do you, I mean. If we say this only applies to properties or accessory apartments permitted x-date, I don't.
20 forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're getting into a lot of minutia and also serious issues.
Yeah, really.
What I'm, what I'm just wondering is, what is the urgency at this point of this ordinance? Because I know that, as we discussed, the original thought process was that we were going to be making it so that people who were in their primary residence could downgrade to the smaller residence and still rent out the other residence. Like, that was the main.
Let them be primary residences still.
Whatever.
Do you want to go there?
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm speaking to, that was our number-one goal, was that people could move downsized from their one to the other. And instead, now we've gotten into this huge discussion where we're about to make some pretty drastic changes to the code, which we may or may not support, but I don't think we've really fully considered. And I think it bears, I mean, if the, if you, if the issue is the short-term rentals and that's going to come into this, it should come into this. And we're not going to sit here and solve that tonight. So the question is.
And it may not even be a zoning issue when it comes to you guys in the future. It may be a business licensing thing that the select board handles on its own.
Right.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Is there an urgency to this, having the option to downgrade your residence? I mean, is this someone, have we heard of anybody that wants to do that?
Yes.
Okay, right.
With downsides.
Hand, handful of people.
Who want to construct new buildings or convert buildings.
Right. So that, that, that's, there is actually some urgency in that aspect of it.
And I think the housing aspect of providing, having people be able to build more housing in town is an urgent thing. I think so.
Then we have a choice as a board to say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna open this up some and recognizing that there are limitations that, that exist already on accessory apartments, that we may or not be in favor of, but they already are in existence. And yet, we're making them at least a little bit more lenient by going with Jeremy's route with the amendments, taking out maybe the owner language and things like that. Or we say we're going to have to really, you know, roll up our sleeves and do a full-on integration with all of the housing issues that we have, short-term rentals, all that other stuff comes in. And so those are the two choices. Because your questions are valid, but they're, but they're gonna, they're gonna force us into another.
It's gonna take time.
It's gonna force us into something where we do not want to rush.
Yeah.
Get a little antsy about, we're talking about, oh, we could remove this and remove this. Next thing you know, we're stripping this thing down and take the owner out of it. As much as I think I'm in favor of that, you take the owner out of it, you've totally changed the nature of it.
You have.
Even just that aspect of it.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I'm not saying, I even have a strong opinion yet as to which way we should go, but I am, I am wary of going down this path of starting to hack this up just because we came up with new ideas or new questions.
The way I'm looking at it, I mean, even just deleting number three might be the way forward. I mean, like, literally, as long as the owner's on site and it's their primary residence, to me, that's the goal. And they can do whatever they want with the rest of their property, as long as they live there.
When we handle owner in other places is to say, or their representative, family representative or something. And that would deal with the inheritance.
Yeah, that was right.
It would make sure that that person in that place was sort of responsible for.
For the owner's rep.
But if, if your parents have passed away, and then you inherit the house.
I'll be your rep, right?
Are you their representative?
Sign over.
That's, that's the dilemma.
So if you inherit a house from, from your family as part of your family estate, right, you don't live there, you're down in Portland, you've inherited this house and, right, I suppose what, you're then the owner, but you don't want to live there. If you're renting that house out to somebody else, they're not your representative.
We allow a homestay, which is kind of more problematic in that you have, can have people go in every day. We allow an owner to have a representative there as their primary residence, run that homestay. So that's what I'm thinking in that instance. It's the same kind of thing. You, you have somebody with a lease, a long-term lease or something, and says they're responsible for managing the, that gets the inheritance part to the inheritance part. If the kids don't want to live there, they can.
We're going to have another meeting on this, Jeremy?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're running, we're, we're running up against, we'll, we'll soon be running up against deadlines, which is fine, but, yeah. I think if you guys can give me some direction on your, on what you think ought to happen with this one, then I can, I mean, I think there's, one way to do it is just, the initial thought was, okay, let that, let that, since we already say, under the current ordinance that says the primary, the owner has to live in the primary residence, let's let them live in the other residence, doesn't matter. The ordinance currently says both of those units have to be primary residences, and we can move forward in that way. And just that way, the owner can live wherever. Or give me some direction and say, ownership doesn't, doesn't need to live there. I mean, I think I need some direction, because that way I can have something drafted, and then we can, next meeting, do it, and then have a hearing right then after, you know, for the first meeting in February, hopefully.
Yeah, I mean, I will, I will say that at this moment, I'm uncomfortable removing the owner out of the equation, simply because it opens the door for somebody to buy the properties up, put in an accessory apartment, and just start renting two apartments. So maybe that's okay.
I mean, it's such a tough one.
We haven't had that conversation. And that's, I don't know that we, I don't know if we have the time right now to do that.
Yeah. I, it's really interesting. I mean, you see where we all went, right? I mean, we're sitting here, we've talked about this for many months, many meetings. Steve came, gave us, you know, laid out his concerns with it. And I think everyone was like, yeah, makes sense what you're saying. And now we, now we circled back to, now we step back to, ownership's important to live there.
We had talked about his number-two scenario, the, the inheritance scenario.
Yeah.
At our meetings. We had talked about that.
Yeah.
Well, I see, like, it's like, we might have sort of approached it, but we've never had like a open discussion, the, the town in general, of what do we want this town to be like with respect to who lives here and what size. And it took like a leap and then got in minutia, where, where like one concept is fighting with another, even though they're trying to say the same thing. But what's missing to me is like an overall concept of who we want to see living in these sort of places for what terms, and what they contribute to the community in much more general ways. And then if you do that and you accept that and the town accepts it, it's much easier to put this kind of stuff forward.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
That, of course, doesn't take into account that you want to have it by the next meeting.
I know. I mean, for me, the problem is, and I don't know, I mean, we've had this on the agenda, planning board agenda, for a handful of meetings, three, four meetings at least. And that list goes, that, that agenda goes to the media. It goes to a list of about 100 people in town that want to get every agenda. And those generally are those people that, Steve Gould, that come to these meetings, generally. And they're the ones who bring up issues at the select board meeting. They're the ones who, you know, are really, have their pulse on what's going on. And in all these meetings, we've had one person, and it was, there was a big write-up in the Penn Bay Pilot on this, and no comments in that paper. I don't always put a lot of, you know, faith in comments, but, and we've had one person comment on this. That's it. And so it's not like we're not trying to get people's, you know, opinions, or try to understand what the town wants for who's living here, or who should be here, or what we want in these neighborhoods. This is on the agenda, has been for many months, and we've heard nothing from anyone. So.
So.
Happy.
Break it down. To break it down, I think what you tried to accomplish here is to allow, to allow an owner to move into an accessory apartment.
Mm-hmm.
That's what our primary goal was here.
And that's desirable.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, the other thing is, does it have to be an owner? And I agree with Steve. I don't think it has to be an owner, but it has to be a residence.
Primary residence.
A primary residence, you know? So I think with, with eliminating just the owner wording in here, we still accomplish what we're trying to do.
Mark. I think so too.
Tell me, in your statement, you said it has to be an owner. We said, no, it doesn't have to be owner. Then it was said, we have to be a primary resident. What does a primary resident offer to the community any more than an owner, or any more than a not-primary resident? What, what are the qualities?
A primary resident, okay, lives in a neighborhood.
Yeah.
All right? So they create a neighborhood community.
And they pay taxes.
They pay taxes. They work in the community. Well, they don't pay taxes. They, they, you know, they pay taxes through rent. But they contribute to the community, all right? They're out, they're going to social functions. They're, they're working in the community, they're living here, they're, they're just.
And you're saying that by virtue that they're here for more than half the year?
Yes.
Is that a fact?
Well, I mean, that, that's the standard definition of a primary resident.
I think in reality, you have people that participate in, you know, society and are involved in neighborhood stuff, and, and you have others that don't.
Yeah, I mean, some have lived here for like decades and they don't.
But the point is, and what we're trying to like avoid here is creating, creating by default, short-term rentals, where you've got, you know, people in and out of the neighborhoods and, and nobody knows anybody. You know, that's it.
This makes it a really attractive investment if you take off primary and owner.
It does.
Really attractive investment.
Maybe we leave the primary residence piece and not worry about the owner, because I think what we really care about is the neighborhoods being neighborhoods.
That's exactly it.
I mean, I get Jeff's point, though, that, you know, there's no requirement right now for that.
You might just take the accessory apartment right out. Like, it wouldn't take a couple sinks and it's no longer an apartment, so you can short-term it. But.
That's, I think it's, it's a rental question.
I mean, as, as an investor, as an investor, if you're coming to Camden, Maine for a vacation rental home, because a lot of people are, and it's happening all over our town, and it's happening on the single families, the two families, the ones on the lake, you can't even get one on the lake, they're just buying them for short-term rentals. And why, I don't agree with it, it's just a fact.
That it's allowed.
And it's allowed. It's legit. And so here's these properties that like, they'll just, you know, if they, they're not going to go for them, but they'll just take out the accessory apartments. It becomes a burden almost on the building. I don't know. I just, to me, I think addressing short-term rentals a little better, like Jeremy's saying, is the way to go about it.
But that's a whole other issue.
It is. It is. It is. But I also want to be cognizant that a single-family home.
Can do it.
You can do whatever you want. A multi-family home, you can do whatever you want. But if you have a single-family home with an accessory apartment, sorry.
Right.
You can't do whatever you want anymore.
Default though.
Well, I mean, understood, but that's just the way it is currently, too.
Exactly.
You know?
I know, I know.
But it's also on a small lot, and, I mean, if you're on 15 or 20,000. Right.
And none of that, none of that rationale is going to affect an investor. They could care less about the size of the lot.
No, but if it's on a small lot in town, 10,000 square feet or less, then you're looking at crowded, your neighbors are right there, do you have sufficient parking? All that stuff comes up when you get, start getting to not-primary residents. People don't know who's coming and going. That's more of a rental. Is that what you want in the neighborhoods?
All I'm saying is that I don't want the properties that have accessory apartments to have, be burdened versus the one next door.
That's not burdened.
That doesn't have an accessory apartment because it's not burdened. There's no, you can do whatever you want with this one here, but this one, you can't do whatever you want because there's an accessory apartment.
Right.
Which is currently the case, right now. If you have an accessory apartment, there is this burden that you talk about attached to it.
Yeah.
So we're not making it any worse than.
Well, you don't have to rent it. If you don't rent it, you can rent that house by the week.
So as long as you're not actually renting out the accessory apartment, you can do whatever you want with your single-family residence.
Yep.
You just cannot rent out the accessory apartment as well.
Exactly.
So it's not actually reducing your.
I don't know about that. I mean, if we permit, if we, someone came in tomorrow, permitted an accessory apartment, and we move forward like this, that says you gotta be primary residence, you pulled that, you weren't renting that accessory apartment, you can't, you still have that accessory apartment, you still gotta comply with the ordinance.
It says, but it says, the owners, it has, they have to be in residence or something. It has to be their primary residence.
Yeah.
So the way that it's been interpreted is that you can rent the house by the week, but in that case, nobody can live in the accessory, even the.
Oh, when you're renting it by the week.
That's the way that it's interpreted now, because the owner has to be.
You know what? This needs a lot more work.
I'm kind of thinking that, too, but, I mean, we're so close. Like, I'm, I'm with you that we're, we're, this is an improvement. I don't know. I think with this group, we can do better.
I mean, my, my concern is, is for the unintended consequences. And I think in reality, the chances of us turning into a community where everything is, these houses that are rented out for short-term rentals is very slim. And in reality, whatever we do here is probably going to have a very minor effect on how the town develops. However, I think, I think we need to be cognizant of this and.
If we keep it, this, if we keep it down, going down the road, the owner hasn't, doesn't have to be there, but both of the units are primary residences. And I, I get it's conflicted with what Jeff's saying, and I get what Jeff's saying, but it addresses Mark's desire to have neighborhoods be more neighborhood-y by, if that's a word, by having both units.
Primary residence.
Primary residents.
People live there for a while.
Living there.
And primary residence does give some sort of, at least, perspective of like control and like responsibility for the unit.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to just having transient stuff coming through.
And so if there's two units and a accessory apartment.
All three primary residences.
All three after a primary. That was my question.
Under, under this scenario. Under, under this scenario, if we take out owner, owner out of it.
And so is there any like percents of these buildings that should be primary residence? Or is it just 100% only? Because I'm kind of like 50% might be a good way to do it.
How would you do that?
Well, if you have two units, you have one of them, but if you have three units, two of them have to be primary residents because it's a minimum of 50%.
I thought that's what the original concept was for two units, because that was...
That gives the flexibility, and it doesn't really matter what unit, I guess, it wouldn't be.
One of them has to be, yeah.
To me, at least one.
Must be, must be a primary residence.
I think, to me, that's kind of like the goal, is to maintain the neighborhood, the community, but the flexibility in the existing infrastructure should be kind of uniform, depending on lot size and, you know, our standards. But just because something has an accessory apartment on it, they shouldn't get kind of pigeonholed versus their neighbor that doesn't have an accessory apartment. That's only my, that's my only concern.
I, I hear that, I see that pigeonhole.
Paragraph four tells me that the accessory apartment needs to be a primary dwelling, and that one of the two units needs to be a primary dwelling.
And that was my understanding.
Oh, you're right.
Yes.
You're right, we did do that.
Yeah.
That was my understanding. When you go to three, you can have one as a short-term.
Yeah.
Yes, we did do that. One, one can be not, you're right.
Right.
When you have three, when you have two plus one.
What's everybody's thoughts about if you have a single family with an accessory? One of those could be, you know, why regulate it's having to be a primary? As long as one of them's a primary residence and one of the two.
Because what that then allows you to do with that is use that accessory apartment as a short-term rental and do Airbnb all summer with it and primarily build it for that reason. And we can have a discussion about whether that's what we want to have happen in town, but that's what that would allow, right? I mean, you could also argue, why not? That's my guest cottage. I want to rent it out for a couple of weeks a year, like you say, to cover property taxes the rest of the time. It's when the kids come to stay.
Right, it doesn't...
Right, I mean, that's where it gets tricky.
It doesn't add to the housing stock, it doesn't add to families or people living, moving here to work here, it does not do that. It would just give someone a weekly rental.
Other things I've heard say, would, would say that that scenario diminishes the neighborhood because that apartment over there, they're in and out every week. In and out, different cars, don't know where it is, put the trash out in the wrong place, you know? It's like a malignancy. You gotta, you gotta keep it out. You can't let it just happen on one arm.
We're trying to find a balance there.
But the thing is, if, if that accessory apartment is, is a short-term rental, and the house is not a short-term rental, then theoretically, I mean, it would be the owners in the house or somebody in charge of, of the accessory apartment who would be watching that. And they would make sure the trash is going in the right spot.
And this is probably everywhere where you can't...
And they would also be living in the neighborhood and contributing to the neighborhood. So...
But they ought to have to live in the house and not the apartment.
Both can't be...
That's asinine.
Neither one.
I'd say it's either one.
And not necessarily the case, though. Not, that's not necessarily the case, because you could, you could be, have, have your house as your primary residence and be there for like six, seven months, then you could disappear for the summer, right? And go hang out in a campground.
Well, we write this in.
And, and, and rent your house, your primary residence, out for short-term rentals through the summer. At the same time, then, you could rent out your accessory apartment.
So we write this in that you can't do?
In, in, in the summer as well. And so in effect, you don't have anybody there long-term over the summer, which is prime rental season for short-term rentals. So, and I'm not saying you shouldn't be able to do that, I'm just saying that situation could happen. You don't necessarily...
If you're willing to rent your home out and go live in a campground, I think you deserve to be able to do it.
We're on your boat.
We're on your boat. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of in favor of being as, as...
We're going to need a bigger boat.
Putting as little restrictions as possible on for people buying property in general. I'm in favor of having the minimum we need in order for us not to have unintended consequences. It's a tricky one.
It is a tricky one.
And I will go down the road just a little bit to the short-term rental thing, and I think that it, what it's going to, what I think will be more palatable for people is if there's an owner on site.
That's my thought.
I think, what I think most people concerned about is if you have people buying a property, there's absentee, they put a lockbox on the door, and there's no one ever there.
Yeah.
Just somebody comes in and cleans, somebody comes in and rents, and that's it. They just see that, that's the type of thing, I think, that...
That's what we want to do.
That what most people would say is what is, goes against, you know, the general, you know, goal of the town.
And we have that happening.
So we don't want, we don't want all units...
That would be happening to any single-family home in town.
Yes.
So we'll, I think we'll agree that we don't want all units being short-term rental at the same time. Like, that's something to totally avoid, right?
So you're talking about having a primary resident in one of the units.
Yeah.
As being sort of the determining factor.
Yeah. And you can't short-term rental all the units, like, you just can't do it. Some, like, it's a primary residence, they can't leave, and all units are short-term rented at the same time. Just, one of the units has to be occupied by the primary resident. Whether they're there when somebody's there or not, that's irrelevant. But to me, it would be nice if we didn't allow somebody to buy a property that has three units, have a primary resident in a little tiny 600-square-foot apartment, Airbnb the two out, the six, the apartment dweller goes traveling for the summer, and then Airbnb all three at the same time. To me, that would be something to avoid altogether.
So I have a concept on that, the short-term rentals, when it comes up for that discussion, is to have two distinct, different short-term rentals. One commercial and one residential. And the commercial is the property that the owners don't live in. And the residential is when, when...
Are occupied.
It, it's your home, and you rent it out. I mean, they're two distinct...
Mm-hmm. They're very different.
Entities.
You go into both of them, they both have furniture in it. How, how are you supposed to know if the owner lives there?
Well, at that point, at that point, we'll, if we ever get down that road, I mean, how that works is that we'd be licensing short-term rentals. I mean, I'm not advocating for that right now, I'm just saying...
What's happened in other towns? Have, other towns had a problem where all their housing is turning into like rentals?
Yeah.
What are the towns and what are they doing? And how have they cured it?
They haven't cured it.
And what are some towns?
London.
Rockland.
Rockland's having some pretty big discussions on that.
Bar Harbor, South Portland. Bar Harbor, a fifth of Bar Harbor's residential units are short-term rentals. One-fifth.
Barcelona, New Orleans.
Yeah, any big city.
South Portland's dealing with it.
South Portland, that's a dense, where people work...
I stayed in an Airbnb.
But there's also plenty of neighborhoods in South Portland that are feeling the impacts of them.
It's an Airbnb, it's a giant apartment complex.
Right.
And they're individually owned units, but I'm sure everybody in there is Airbnb their unit. They all just bought a unit so they could just...
Why don't...
Have we had complaints of any neighbors?
Oh, yes.
In our town?
Yeah. Not as many. Well, you know, when I first got here, I heard that short-term rentals was a, a big issue. Honestly, I have not heard, I mean, I've not heard a lot of complaints, honestly.
Do the complaints come from people who just have an aversion to one...
Neighborhoods.
No, one, I can't use the word now because they're all defined. One rent in the neighborhood, or the ones who are calling in complaining, saying like, across the street, she's got it there, he's got it behind me, they're all over, or are they just here and there?
Central Street, people can't find a place to park on Central Street because everybody rents out their places short-term. Three, four cars, there's only room for one to park and...
I mean, that, yeah, that's a whole nother...
We've, we have complaints, but nobody wants to register a complaint.
Parking thing, I mean, I think that's what we had is...
And the complaints coming from neighbors, is that generally the...
Neighbors. The whole issue of parking on the street, though, I, I get frustrated with because, you know, the parking that's in front of someone's house is not their parking. It is public parking on a street. And if I want to park on Central Street, I'm going to park on Central Street.
Yeah.
And town can't tell me I can't park on Central Street.
But what's interesting to me is now you hear like certain negativity associated with that can't find a place to park on Central Street, but Central Street of, of most of the town is one of the, one of the most dense neighborhoods, exactly what we're looking for. You can't have density and no parking. It doesn't happen.
Not unless you require it on-site.
Require, that's BS. That's a word.
Right, but that's...
I'm talking about in reality.
Right, I agree.
There's a dense neighborhood on Central Street. I want to go, in fact, I'm going to a friend's there tomorrow, I want to park on that street. You know, you can't have, you can't have, you can't have density without curb parking. And in, in many respects, curbside parking is considered an attribute with like Duane Zire, whatever their name is, the architects in Florida who are behind...
The New Urbanists.
Yeah, the New Urbanists. They say one of the greatest attributes is if you separate living from the street by cars. It's a barrier. So there's, there's not everything wrong about curbside parking.
No, I, no, I know, I agree with you, wholeheartedly.
I grew up on Central Street. The houses are, you know, length...
He's right, it's one of the most dense...
And there's not much road in front of the house.
That's what makes it such a desirable street.
That's a cool street.
Do we have any part, I mean, just in relation to what we're talking about here, is that, does that affect anything we're discussing here?
No, it's off-subject. But it, but it's, actually, it's the focus. Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Our parking, our parking, parking schedule requires accessory apartments to have a, a parking space on, on the property.
And a dwelling unit to have two.
Off-street.
Off-street.
I'd almost personally want to get rid of that, but...
Off-street line?
Yeah. That's just me, I know, that's a, probably not going to go, go very well here, but...
Off-street means not being used for a vehicle.
No, I mean, so we're kind of with you in terms of on-street parking in general, I, I...
Use it.
Yeah.
That's what it's there for.
So, so you wouldn't mind like random cars parked in front of your house every day?
It's been that way for a while.
The church, every time the church comes in, I get people parking on my...
He parks his boat out there.
Where that comes in?
Church, because it says, at least on, you know, Christmas Eve, they're all the way down Union Street to the... We needed more people to park on coal courses, the trucks can't get down there.
Here, can I have a suggestion on this?
More people go to church.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure we're all, one conversation at a time. So Jeremy?
I was just going to say, can I, let's, like, not do anything with this right now. Let me look at it. I can look at other ordinances on accessory apartments. There's a whole manual that American Planning Association has on accessory apartments and dwelling units. That's where a lot of this, I dove into to get some of this stuff, as well as our ordinance was pretty good on it, but they're all pretty much say the same thing. I'm just saying, just letting you know, they all pretty much say what we're saying. But I can dive into it a little bit more and come up with some other suggestions. If we can't, you know, come to some consensus on this, what I'd like to do anyway is maybe to just try to tweak it so that we allow the owner, the existing conditions to be fixed so that that owner can live in either one. If we can't figure out how best to address this right off, just, just allow that owner to live in either one of them. I'm just...
That's the simple goal, right? We're just trying to do our due diligence.
I was trying to also, again, bring in some housing into town and not have it be short-term housing.
Yeah.
Now, that's desirable.
Right? And a lot of towns are using accessory dwelling units or accessory apartments as a way to get more, more density in town and increase the density and get more apartments, more, more dwelling units, which we don't have a lot of people coming into town to add units to a house. I mean, to properties, we don't. And that's a problem for Camden. Select Board says it's a problem, C-Dax says it's a problem, I mean, everyone, housing issue up and down the coast, every, it's a problem. Belfast did a bunch of ordinance amendments to allow accessory apartments a year or so ago.
Oddly, anybody's taken advantage of it.
Not many people have taken advantage of it, but...
They can't even do the house.
You know, in reality, financially, it doesn't make sense for what real estate costs in this town. It does not make sense to buy a house for a long-term rental.
I know, it's just a fact.
Just doesn't justify it, you know? It's, it's, it doesn't.
Especially the old houses.
That's why you buy it and you put it into short-term rental, you make the big dollars, and then you can justify the cost of the property.
Mm-hmm. It's true.
And are people managing to rent, do short-term rentals year-round?
I see a lot of people in, like, Christmas time?
I know people come up for like the winter stuff and...
Holidays? Yeah, yeah, people come visit. Toboggan championship.
A lot of, a lot of what happens in the wintertime is you get traveling nurses, you get the woodworking school, and they're here for three months. So, so you do a three-month...
And they're not contributing to the neighborhood, for the most part. Three-monthers.
Well, traveling nurses are...
You get a, you get a nurse, and that nurse is working, like, sleeping in the day if they're working at night, vice versa. Wood school, they keep them out there. Those people work like non-stop out there. They're not joining the library board. They're not contributing the way that we're talking about.
But still, given the choice of having a house empty for most of the time, or having it rented out with people in it, those people are still going to shop and buy food, they're still buying gas, they're still going out to eat at restaurants, and you've still got that house being used. And while if there's a traveling nurse needs a place to stay, I'd be really happy if they could find a place to stay close to the hospital, because you never know when they might be my nurse, and I'd be glad if they could, you know? I mean, it, it goes back to...
A lot of those people wind up moving here. A lot of the people that do the furniture schools, the boatbuilding schools, photograph... They come, they loved it here, they go, they do their thing, and they're like, that was miserable. They come back here, and they're miserable and happy here.
All right, so I think we've got time, anyway, to at least try to give you another draft of something. I can give you a couple options maybe for the next meeting. One that just fixes the issue to address, I think, what we were trying to get at, and then give you another option, and then you can decide one way or the other at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would, I'm going to ask for at least two options. One that removes the owner, and one that removes the primary residence, so we can at least look at them.
Then I'm going to give you three.
Right, that's what I mean. And then you have the one that just sort of adds in the, the, hey, you can use either residence.
Right.
Right, yeah, so that's three. But that shouldn't take too much.
No.
And, and that way we can look at them side by side and see, because it's hard right now, you, the way we've got, we're talking about eliminating, adding, stuff.
Yep, understand.
And then we can consider better, I think, what, what the repercussions are.
All right. And maybe the media will do a little review of this meeting and do a summary of it, and of it, and all of a sudden...
Good luck.
Good luck.
Camden Herald has been doing...
I'll read the newspaper.
Camden Herald has been, I would say, she does, watch these.
No idea how such a simple issue got so complicated.
But it did.
I still can't fathom it.
But it did. All right. Let's move on.
All right.
Is there more?
We're only halfway through.
There are two more items.
Yeah, that was the easy one.
That was the easy one. No, I think the next one is easy.
Site plan review, right?
Yes, site plan review. That's what's up next. Let's have a, open the hearing on that, or maybe I'll describe it first.
Given that we have nobody here.
Yes, we have to open the hearing and then close the hearing. But just let me give you a summary on this. As you recall, I believe, we've discussed this again a handful of times. There are issues in our zoning ordinance right now where nothing in the ordinance says that once someone gets site plan approval, they're required to maintain that site in accordance with that latest dated approved plan. This ordinance amendment does that. The ordinance amendment also redefines what, or just kind of reconfigures where minor field adjustments, how they're dealt with. It creates something called minor revisions, which we had talked about. And then it also creates something called site plan amendments and a process for those to get reviewed, as well as a process for minor revisions to get reviewed. Nothing has changed from what you guys had liked the last time. You gave me things to change the prior, time before that. I did that. You reviewed it. Nothing's changed since then. Bill Kelly read this. He liked it. He's good with it. This is really not a philosophical... So...
There's no short-term rentals.
There are no short-term rentals tucked away in this. So that's what those changes are. They've been advertised. They're available for the public to view. No one has commented on this. I've heard nothing. Oh, correct me. I'm wrong. Correct myself. Deb Dodge could not be here today. Maybe I will include that when you open this up for the public hearing, and I will include Deb Dodge's comments.
Do that.
Okay?
Okay.
Public hearing?
So I'm going to declare the public hearing part of this open.
Open.
For site plan review comments. I don't see anybody in the public, but Jeremy?
Correct. I have, no one's here in the public, but I do have comments from Deb Dodge on this, and I will read this. "I am unable, dear Jeremy and planning board members, I am unable to attend this Thursday's meeting, so I would like to submit my comments via this email. This proposal is well done. I am in favor of specifying and outlining the criteria and procedures for minor site plan revisions and site plan amendments. I think the distinctions between a minor and amendment are well-defined. But I think something important is missing, and that is to add the requirement for a sidewalk for site plan amendments. I think that the Quarry Hill amendment is a case in point. The impact and extent of the changes to the site for new parking spaces around the Anderson Inn and the entrance to Community Drive warranted an in-person view of the site. The only exception to that requirement might be if the original site plan approval was quite recent, say within the last year, or a majority of those voting were on the board at the time of the original plan's approval and the proposed as the First Amendment. Quarry Hills was at least 16 years ago. No one currently on board was, I think she's trying to say, on the board, was involved with that plan. As adept at reading site plans in two dimensions as board members are..."
A B.
Nice. Yep.
However, though, coming...
Nothing beats being on the ground to truly visualize the potential impacts of any proposed changes. Photos such as I took are limited and can't show context. Even aerial photos cannot adequately show you what really exists from the proper perspective and scale, and that is the perspective of humans on the ground at human scale. I hope you will take this into consideration in your deliberations. Sincerely, Deb Dodge." Those are the only comments that I had. I think those are very valid comments.
Not really comments.
So, do you want to...
If you can't do, if you can't do sidewalks.
Do we close the public hearing?
No, not yet.
Okay, so maybe...
Can we discuss it while it's open, while the public, we can discuss it among each other?
If you wanted on the record of the public hearing that your comments, then you should make them during...
Who comments?
I think, let's do that. One thought I had, and I reminded her in an email that...
Actually, it says we should close it first and then discuss.
That's my understanding.
In terms of procedure, it says we should close it before we start discussing it.
Before we discuss it, yes.
Can we?
Let's close it.
Just do that. Okay, so do we need to make a motion to close it?
Sure. Yep.
I make a motion to close the public part...
Comment.
Public comment section of this hearing. All those in favor? Aye, five zero, unanimous.
Okay. Just to follow up, I sent Deb a response thanking her for very insightful comments, and I said, I just reminded her that the site plan ordinance does not require any sidewalk. So if someone wanted to come in for a 10,000-square-foot building, you do not have to do, you're not required like subdivision. Remember, we went out to Coal Court Ave and did that subdivision walk? I don't think some of those are necessary sometimes. It's my perspective, but that one we had to do because it says for subdivision, you shall do a sidewalk. The site plan ordinance does not say anything about you shall. It says you may do a sidewalk. You have that ability at any time when you're reviewing a site plan amendment in the future or a regular site plan. I mean, we did one for Lyman Morris. We did a sidewalk. You know, it was talked about doing a sidewalk for Quarry Hill, and it was decided not needed. So there's always the option for the planning board to do a sidewalk.
Okay. Well, I, I contend like if members of the planning board are hesitant or not willing to do sidewalks, they shouldn't be on the planning board. Like, I don't consider a sidewalk a hardship.
No, I would agree with that, but I think really to Deb's point, we thought this was just adding parking, whatever, and I think she, you know, she raises a valid point where the area that was being, where the parking was being added, that berm that was being removed, we, we as a board sort of didn't really consider that because we hadn't been there to look at it. And so she's talking about it, just our eye level, would we have seen that and been like, "Oh, what's going on over here? How are you handling that?" We might have seen it without her raising it instead of her coming in. The only reason why we started talking about it is because she brought it to our attention.
Mm-hmm.
So I, you know, I'm happy to do sidewalks. I have no issue with it, and they don't take that long. And I don't, I don't know about requiring them, but maybe as a board we can, you know, acknowledge, acknowledge...
I think maybe what the board should do is maybe make, when they, when all of these come in, whether it be site plan or amendment, every time, make a decision and do a vote on whether or not you're going to do a sidewalk.
Yes.
Make that just a policy of the planning board.
Yes.
How does that sound?
If we do decide to do a sidewalk, does that then bind everybody on the board who can make it to going? It's not like we do a sidewalk and then maybe, you know, these two decided that it's needed and the other three of us don't. Do you know what I'm saying? If we vote as a board to do a sidewalk...
Then the, then the planning board's doing the sidewalk.
And we're all required to be on there. Okay.
It's, it's not legal for me to go alone.
Correct.
And drive down Quarry Hill Road.
Correct.
Right, which is...
Even though you drive down it.
One thing...
I got a story about that.
Go to the trash.
There's a chance that these subdivision amendments...
Site plan amendments.
Site plan amendments would be a one-night meeting. If you wait until it comes to you to decide whether or not to have a sidewalk, you've put it off. If you say automatically that when a site plan amendment comes to you, there's going to be a sidewalk the day of the meeting in the morning or something like that, then it's publicly known when that application is noticed, because that has to be, that has to be announced, the decision made in public, as far as I understand.
Sidewalk and the time.
However, that, the way, if, if we did that, then we're having the, we're committing ourselves to do a sidewalk before we actually hear the application.
Mm-hmm. Or you're, or you're putting it off for two more weeks.
Before we hear it, yeah.
Before we hear it, and I'm not convinced that's necessarily the best time to do a sidewalk if we're going to do one.
Agreed.
You can also hear the applicant, and if you determine we're not ready to make this decision without a sidewalk, then have a sidewalk.
Yeah. That's how I see it. I mean, you know, under the current, this proposal, right, minor revision that can be approved by myself and the code officer, under 200 square, 200 square foot addition, vestibule on a building, the designer forgot to do a vestibule, we can approve that. Staff can approve that, as long as it complies with all the other, you know, the standards. But if it's a vestibule at 201 square feet or 210 square feet, I, I would hate to mandate a sidewalk for a, something that we can approve, something that has no real impact on any of the standards. It's in the middle of a site. It's just an entryway vestibule that got increased. Why would we, why would we mandate that you guys do a sidewalk for something like that? I, it doesn't make sense to me. I like the idea of sidewalks, but I think it should be the board's discretion on every, on every applicant, application to say, "Let's do a sidewalk or not." I mean...
Except for someone like that Quarry Hill, that slipped through in my mind. And going to a sidewalk like, you know, as Deb's and others, like you look at something in 3D and it's a reality. There's only a certain number of people that are not always on a planning board who know how to read grades and look at these complex plans and realize, "Oh, that's a berm there, and there's going to be this much rise." And you go there in person, and it's a whole different story.
Yeah. No, I get that.
So I don't understand your, your statement, saying it's illegal for us to actually drive and look at a property.
You, you cannot, as part of, once the application's in, and you cannot go to a site and take that, use that information to make decisions at a planning board meeting in the future. You cannot do that.
Without sharing it.
Without sharing everything that happened.
Wait a minute. When you go with all of us to a site, you don't share it because you get your tongue cut off if I try to mention something to the person I'm next to on the planning board. Uh-uh. It's, sidewalks are not sharing.
You're not supposed to...
Therefore, you're not supposed to deliberate.
You're supposed to observe.
You're supposed to observe the situation in hand. So say this Quarry Hill one, you guys got out there, you did a sidewalk, and you saw, and the, the designer, the agent for the applicant says, "Okay, this is where parking lot A is that has six spaces. See that berm? That berm's going away. That's where the parking is going to go." You guys observe that. You don't start deliberating about that berm. You come back to this meeting, you can ask some questions. You come back to the planning board meeting, and then you deliberate and you talk about that berm. You talk about how the, how that is, the negatives or the positives of the project. You can't...
You could say to him, "Okay, so you're removing that berm, but you're only lowering it how far?"
Correct.
And you say, "Yes, we're going to drop it down one foot."
Correct.
It won't, you know, affect the screening. You can ask questions like that. I can't turn to you and say, can't turn to you and say, "Well, that's really bad."
Yeah.
Yeah, you...
Everybody hears it. See, that's the problem.
And the applicant has to hear it too, because the applicant needs to be able to respond to that, and that has to be in a public setting.
I mean, that's why all our deliberation that has anything to do with the project before as it's in process is supposed to happen here in public as a board, so that we all hear everything that each other say and can all respond to it, right? I mean, that's my understanding.
Correct. Yep.
So taking, taking Deb's information or her suggestion into account, we just say, "It's a good suggestion, but we're not going to, we don't want to be bound to always mandating a sidewalk, but as a board, we're committed to..."
To conducting sidewalks.
And I think we've been pretty good at that.
Yeah.
I think maybe we should have gone to Quarry Hill for a sidewalk.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fair.
But I think overall, we've been pretty good at it.
What's on the agenda now, coming up, that might profit from a sidewalk?
The middle school.
The middle school project.
Well, I would say that would be essential to go see that.
I think we should discuss that as a board.
You will discuss that when, and we're not going to talk about it.
Yes, when it comes up at the time.
Right.
And I'll say that I'm, I'm sorry about Quarry Hill, because I've been there so much that I just assumed everybody knew the site, because in a small town like this, to me, a place like Quarry Hill is kind of like in front of Cappy's, where it's like...
It's all private.
It is, but you say you drive through up there every day.
Oh, don't remind me about that.
It is outy.
Did you get in trouble?
We probably all know people that are staying there, living there.
Well, I'm going the long way to the transfer station.
All right. So...
How are we getting on with this?
One thing that you might think is if, if there's a rush, kind of, if the applicant wants a decision, you could offer them a pre-application. They have to have their stuff in 15 days in advance, which means that it would be here two weeks before your meeting. And you can hear a small thing and decide then maybe. That would not delay it.
That's possible. That's possible.
On the pre-application.
Yeah, not a formal pre-application.
I like, I like where you're getting at, because I've seen it before where they come in and we're like, "Well, we're going to need a sidewalk." And it's like, we get nowhere in the first meeting, and then they've got to come back, and then we start getting somewhere. And it, it does hold stuff up.
It does. It's two weeks, yeah.
If there's a way to...
Well, it's extending it by another two weeks.
Which is two weeks.
Which I don't see as being a huge...
I don't, I do not see that as a burden.
I don't see that as being very onerous. I think people can just go through the process.
Okay.
And if it takes a month instead of two weeks, because I don't see how we can make that conversation by emailed copies of stuff we have via email in between as a board about whether we need to go do a site.
Oh, you can't.
No, you guys can't do that. No. That would be really, I think, for me to, when the application comes in and I see it, and I say, you know, I say to the applicant, "I think the board ought to do a sidewalk. Why don't we do a pre-application meeting first?" And then, and then they come here and they say, "Here's the project, and look, we've got some pictures of what we want to do, but Jeremy mentioned maybe a sidewalk's necessary. Would you guys like to do a sidewalk?" And then you guys make that decision.
I can put some on notice that you're looking at probably an additional, you know, a little two-week time period.
No, it is, it doesn't make it additional.
With Jeremy spearheading like that, he can, he can do it ahead of the first meeting and get us, you know, organized to do it.
Right. There would be no delay.
Because it becomes a pre-app meeting then.
Correct.
In effect, we pull it forward two weeks, so they don't have to have absolutely everything there signed in triplicate.
When, when people call, there hasn't been a lot of people to call about site plan process, but, you know, what's the timeframe? You know, how long does it take? They ask, you know? I've traditionally always said a month. You know, from the time you submit before you get to a planning board meeting, it's actually two weeks really here. But if I say a month, it gives us, it gives us them a little time, and I'll mention sidewalk and all that, so...
And it gives a second meeting opportunity.
I think we ought to, someone ought to make a motion on this, and...
I have a little...
You got something? Hopefully it's, okay, I like grammar errors on this rather than substantive changes.
C, minor revisions. Minor revisions to approve. Shouldn't that say site plan?
Site plan.
Site development plans?
Can we just refer to it as site plan?
Sure. Okay. All right. Can I get a motion in a second and a vote?
That we're going to close the meeting or that we're going to pass this along. Are we saying that...
Pass this along, recommend to the select board that they hold a public hearing and, and as soon as possible on this, so that they can get this to voters in June.
And is this just for the site plan?
Correct.
Not for the...
Yes.
These is two separate hearings. The other accessory one separate, and this is the, this is for site plan administration changes.
Yep.
Okay. So...
No, I'm not doing anything.
I'll make a motion that we pass the site plan review amendment, Article 12, along to the select board for, as written, for...
With the minor revision.
With the minor revision noted.
I second that.
All those in favor? Aye, five zero.
Great. Thank you.
I'm going to beef that up.
Okay.
Add the rest of the language about sending it, having a hearing and sending it on to the voters for, for June. Is that all right?
Oh, yes, 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 sorry. Good.
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Next item on the agenda would be other discussion on zoning map changes. And this is the, we have talked about this before, the Business River Trin, Business District, moving, removing that and create, and making those lots, 16 lots, B1. Zoning map, really quick. I sent that to you guys last night, but BTR, everyone knows where that BTR is. It does pick up David Dickey's buildings over there, comes up to wastewater treatment plant is BTR. You know, mechanic going up is BTR. Knox Mills, BTR. The Green with Envy buildings, BTR.
The skate park, the Y Center.
Yeah, that's BTR.
Like the old, what is it? The Kodak Building.
Yeah. Emerge, Public Safety Buildings, BTR. So...
Parking lot?
Yes, BTR.
Part of it, well.
I had, I had sent, as I mentioned to you before, last time we talked about this, I was going to send a letter to all the property owners and let them know we were looking at this. I did do that, and I have heard from no one. Zero. No one. No one. Even David? He did say he wanted to talk to me about it. That was quite some time ago. I have not been able to talk to him, but then he got my letter, and he knows multiple properties in there. So I think my letter probably addressed his issues. Maybe I can read to you what I sent to them, just for everyone to know. I sent this to 16 properties. Possible rezoning of properties, and this is the, the subject, possible rezoning of properties located in the BTR to Downtown Business One District. To whom it may concern, as a property owner with property located in the BTR district, I wanted to seek your input on a possible zoning ordinance change and map amendment that would change the zoning classification of your property. As you will note from the enclosed map, there are presently in what is generally considered the downtown, four separate zoning districts. They are the BTR, B1, B3, and BTH. Of these four zoning districts, the BTR and the B1 are nearly identical in uses that are allowed and in terms of lot development standards such as lot coverage and setbacks, except that BTR requires 1,500 square foot per dwelling unit of lot size, while the B1 does not have a minimum lot size requirement for dwelling units. In an effort to provide more housing opportunities in the downtown and to facilitate the town's acquisition of the Knoxville parking lots for public use, the select board and the planning board have asked me to look at various options. In my professional opinion, the best option would be to rezone the lots that are zone BTR to B1. I've reviewed the current uses of the 16 lots that are in the, in the BTR zone, and I'm confident that there would be no negative impacts and no grandfathered, grandfathering issues in taking this approach. Again, the use currently, uses currently allowed in the BTR are nearly identical to those in the B1. The development standards for both zones are identical, except, again, for the minimum lot size dwelling units, for dwelling units. I have enclosed the current zoning map, as well as the BTR and B1 zoning district regulations for each of the zones for your comparison and your use. It's my hope to bring this issue back to the planning board at their meeting scheduled for Thursday, January 9th. No one here. Your input is critical to this effort. I can be reached at phone number, my cell phone, or by email. I firmly believe that this proposal will have positive impacts on the town's efforts to try to provide more housing in town while addressing the need for additional publicly-owned parking in the downtown. Do not hesitate. Contact me at any time. I look forward to hearing from you. Respectfully me. And I have not heard from anyone. So there are a couple of uses that, I mean, I think you've looked at them, and we've chatted about them before, like, printing, printing presses. What's that? Storage?
That was the big one.
I did look at all the current uses on all the lots that are out there, and no one is using, has those uses at all currently. That would go away. And again, one is printing presses are allowed in the BTR, printing, like newspaper printing plants. That's a use that we allow in the BTR. We don't allow it in the B1. We don't have one of those. I don't expect we'll ever get one. I mean, they're shutting down all over the place. There's one printing facility in the state of Maine, it appears right now, that does all the printing for all the newspapers, and that's in Lewiston area. So, that's where the Camden Herald's printed, where the Bangor Daily's printed, where the Press Herald's printed, all in the same building. So, I don't envision us ever getting one. So, that's what I have on this. My plan is to, for you, for next meeting, is to have all of the changes that need to happen in the zoning ordinance to fix this, to switch this out. So, we have, we're going to have to do a search, right, of the zoning ordinance for BTR, and change that out to be one in every, in every location.
Find and replace.
What's that?
Find and replace.
Yes.
Great. Just delete.
Yeah.
Um, any thoughts on that? I think some people may have thoughts or concerns, maybe, about buffers, you know, against residential properties, but those are, it's, it's still written in there, non-residential use versus residential use. That's where we got ramped up buffers.
How about congregate housing?
How about congregate housing?
Yeah, like, what's the name of that place up there?
Three.
It was Camden Hill.
Yeah.
They require a certain minimum lot area per room. It's a minimum, the state minimum room size for, to cover for Medicare, I think, 100 square feet per person.
Well, the life safety code gets you actually less than that per room, so.
You can do 70 square feet.
You can do 70 square feet, under the life safety code.
Seven foot by 10 foot. Big by European standards.
I just wondered, it occurred to me, that they'd be able to expand the strengths now.
This is too small.
Which, I mean, we want people to be able to live here, and even if they're in congregate housing, I mean, we, I, I think we ought to facilitate congregate housing, regular housing.
This goes back to the long-term goal of increasing densification in towns, right?
This only applies to 16 lots, so, I mean, there's, you know, not a whole lot that can happen, but I do know there's a handful of properties that can go start putting some dwelling units in them, that they currently can't, which is a good thing. Let's not go down the road of are they going to be short-term rentals?
Did you say accessory apartments?
We're not going to be putting accessory apartments up, because you can't...
How long do they live here?
Enough.
Six months and a day.
All right, any...
So, we're going to discuss that for the next week.
We are, and so my thought would be that we would have, we would have the discussion on it with the final ordinance in front of you, and we would have already scheduled the public hearing for that, so that we can have the public hearing in February. Does that make sense to you all?
Mm-hmm. So, the next meeting, January?
23rd, right? Yep.
And then the one after that is February the 6th?
Yeah.
Is that when you're saying we're going to have a public hearing?
I'm going to beat Ethan to this one, I'm not going to be here in the February 20th meeting.
That's what...
That was going to be a question. All right, how's everyone on the 20th?
That's school vacation.
Yes.
Right.
You here on the 20th?
I actually don't think I'll be away.
Ah.
I don't have any plans right now.
I have kids, and I will be here on the 20th.
I have kids, and I will not be.
I have kids, and I think I will be. Unless I can find a way not to be. I think I'm going to be here.
I'll be with my kids, but it's not...
Nice. All right, does that sound good? And...
So, we don't know if we're going to do it the February 20th?
If I'm not going to be here, I mean, the meeting's just not even...
My goal is...
On the 20th, you're not going to be.
Yeah, keep in mind, we're running out, so March 17th is when I have to have the select board, right, the recommendations from the planning board for March 7, by March 17th, to the select board, so that they can schedule a hearing on more articles. So, I understand, Jeff, you're on the 20th, but...
No, I'm joking, you guys meet, go ahead and meet while I am not here.
I'm right on the verge. I'm either gone Thursday or Friday.
I, I think it's going to be.
Okay, so, if that's the case, and we can't get a quorum, I, we need to, we need to be able to get these done. And I'm going to bring you demo delay too, just so you know, that's going to be coming to you.
Would you be willing to meet on the 27th if we skip the 20th? I know...
That's what I was going to say.
Some of you have commitments.
You won't be here?
Why that week?
The whole week?
Well...
I'm, I'm not sure exactly, but...
Okay. If need be, can we do, if need be, I'm just throwing this out there, can we do the 13th, the 6th and the 13th? I know that's one week in a row, I mean, two weeks in a row. But is it possible also to, we have March 5th, and if, we may need to have March 12th as a last, like, need to do a hearing on the 12th, so we can have recommendations as a select board on the 17th, if need be?
And then do we get that on the 19th, because we...
Unless, unless we have applicant, unless we have site plan, someone coming in for something. The only thing I have, I think, pending, coming soon, is the school, which they're shooting for the 6th, February. And you will, at some point, see a application for a pier out in the coastal harbor, pretty large pier.
I mean, I'm fine with doing that.
Okay. I mean, I'm going to shoot, I'm, I'm going to shoot to have everything done. I'm going to shoot to have draft for you, for the BTR to B1, and accessory apartment revised, with multiple options, so that you can pick which one you like for the 23rd. And I'm going to shoot for having a demolition delay ordinance for you on the 23rd to review.
And then the hearing on...
And then the hearing, my hope would be February 6th, Jeanie.
I thought it was a demolition review.
Demolition review, I'm sorry. Yes, you are correct. And I had planned for, just so you know, planned for demolition review, is to just add it to a demolition review piece to the permit requirement section, where a permit required in the zoning ordinance. Rather than doing a historic preservation review ordinance, I'm going to try to beef up a section for demolition review, and just put it into that permit required section. The select board directed me to do demolition review, they did not direct me to do historic preservation, and that is, historic preservation will come at a later time. I heard from, at the other meeting, we started, they started down when we met some of the folks from the historic committee, resource committee, I think they were advocating at first for historic preservation, more review, design review, and then, once we got, started talking about vinyl siding and windows and all that, I heard them and sensed them kind of backing away from the, that, from that a little bit, and said, just take a bite of the apple first, that's what I heard. So I'm going to do that. Make sense? Okay. My plan is...
Get through.
What's that?
I mean, I anticipate that will get voted through, who knows, but...
Right. Um, my plan was, it will be, is if it is a historic property on the National Register, and it's only going to apply to National Register districts and historic landmarks, they wanted it to apply to properties that are 75 years old or older. The challenge with that is, then you got to, that's almost every building in town, well, not every building, but probably two-thirds, probably two-thirds. And then it requires then a board of some sort to actually, or someone to actually do a review, so you really need a historic architectural historian to do a review under, using the Secretary of Interior standards to make a determination whether that building warrants listing on the National Register or something, and then if that's, I mean, that's a whole, that's, that's historic preservation, I mean, the review, that's not demolition delay, and they're very different. And I think we should just try to take a bite at this right now.
Just to apply it to, I wasn't around for the, the whole North Jacobs discussion, but that wouldn't have applied to, the demolition review, wouldn't apply to that demo.
No.
Not unless they go forward with making that a historic district.
As Jeremy's proposing it, the, the, the small bite of the apple would not apply to that.
Hold on. So, just clarified. So, they did say, when they, when Pat Scaling and the Historic Resource Committee gave me kind of a draft version of what I had drafted, they gave me some edits, they wanted to apply to properties 75 years old or older, historic landmarks, registered dis, properties in registered districts, and then they said, properties that are under consideration for listing as an, as a historic district. I, I kept that in. So if, in this case, Jacobs Avenue is, is under consideration...
It is, at present.
At present. So if there's a district that's under consideration, then it would apply to those. So correction on that one. And I don't know when that Jacobs Avenue started becoming under consideration. And I have a whole series of questions on that. I mean, do the property owners know it's under consideration?
That's a wrong question, like, is Maestri owner?
But I don't know. But that's my, that's my question. And I gotta, I gotta talk to the Historic Resources Committee on that.
Street by street, they wanted to include Pearl Street from Park Street down, I think it was, something like that.
So...
Sorry.
So that's where we are. That's what I'm going to plan to do.
Thank you.
Just be prepared to try to attend meetings that may need to be scheduled back-to-back weeks, if you can. I'll give you as much heads up as possible.
Thank you. I mean, the key thing is getting stuff finalized, so that we can pass it along to the select board at this point, so it can go before the voters. That's, that's what the urgency is at the moment.
The select board still needs to deliberate it too. I mean, it's not like...
Yeah, I think they'll put a fair amount of, I think they'll put a fair amount of, well, I think they'll put more, more trust into you guys, into myself, than you may be giving yourselves credit for.
I never give myself credit.
Trust me. Don't know about you.
So can you, anybody who's going to be gone the end of February, could you let me know as soon as you know?
Well, I think these two, I think are out.
This is an if.
It's an if, and I think Rosie's a doubtful, right? It sounded like doubtful, the 27th are doubtful.
I may not be around, yeah.
Right.
Just the school vacation, I'm not going to be here the second half of that week.
Right, just that we may have to continue the meeting for the school that starts on the 6th, and right now, it would have to be the 13th, if the 20th and the 27th are out.
So, Mark may be away during school vacation too, right? So, maybe two down.
Yeah. So as far as the school goes, I mean, I think the school and their engineers are going to have to understand that if we don't have a quorum, we don't have a quorum, and we can't hold a meeting.
Can we let them know ahead of time?
Let them know.
Okay, so they don't make the trip up here unnecessarily, though?
They're shooting for the February 6th, and maybe what I should tell them, just give them a heads up that we ought to do a site walk.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe, maybe we can try to do a site walk the morning of that meeting.
We've already done a site walk for that project, but we have, like, new warrants and, yeah.
The thing is, you'll have to decide, it'll have to be on the agenda, and you'll have to set the date for the site walk next meeting.
Correct. Next meeting. So I will reach out to Steve Sargent and say, hey, we're going to bring up the, the question of a site walk, and likely, they're going to say yes. So we're going to do a site walk on that.
You've had the three app.
Morning or the afternoon of the 6th, right before the planning board meeting. Is that?
It, it should still be light at 4:00.
Yeah, we're gaining.
4:30?
Ever so slowly, we're gaining on both ends.
And that's easier on them, because then they...
Yeah, I, what I don't, yes, for that one, I, since it's a school project, and there's taxpayer money involved, I'd rather have their engineers here for a shorter window than being, I mean, they're not going to be driving back down to Portland or New Hampshire after their site walk.
For anybody's project, whose ever money it is, it's nice not to be putting people up unnecessarily.
A little more, as in the taxpayer dollars. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to close the meeting?
Close the meeting.
Make a motion to close the meeting? All right, all those in favor, aye, five zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.